Council meeting.
Sorry.
And the recording is in progress. This special city council meeting, which is going to be an ongoing discussion on where we stand on COVID and our COVID response. So, we we held a meeting similar to this last week and we had forty people on the Zoom call and I understand another forty plus on YouTube where we're or the website where we're also we're streaming the meeting and I believe we're going to attempt to do that again today. So we get as much exposure as possible. I got a few things I want to talk about, make a few comments before we get in going here. But first of all, I want to read you a email I got from Mary Faith Bell, who's the Chair of the Tillman County Commissioners, who was with us last week but cannot be with us today. Since they are having a similar meeting this morning, which I listened to for a few minutes from eight thirty till noon. And I did spend three and a half hours with them on a call yesterday on COVID also. So they're busy. But from Mary Faith to the to the consulars and myself, and I want to share this with the community. Says, I want to offer a couple of thoughts at your emergency meeting last week. There was discussion about shutting things down similar to the spring of 2020. The difference is that at this time, the virus, the difference is at that time, the virus wasn't here yet, and we were trying to prevent visitors from coming to Tillman County. It was our attempt to be an island to protect Tillman County. And the Board of Commissioners are not considering shutting anything down now because the virus is already here. The surge is among our unvaccinated community members, and it appears to be primarily community spread. To my knowledge, there is no evidence that visitors are causing this surge. Rather, again, it is being spread among our own community members. We are recommending canceling events, celebrations and in-person gatherings, meetings remotely, and working from home whenever possible, enforcing employees wearing masks, if not working from home and encouraging people to get vaccinated and to get tested. So. Just a few thoughts here before we get started. I was involved, as I said, with three and a half hours of meetings with the county commissioners yesterday. And again, they are meeting again right now as we speak. They're trying to work out the details of how they're going to close a courthouse again and how to enforce the governor's mask mandate, which goes into effect Friday. And one thing they did discuss, they are not going to require county employees to get vaccinated. The county district attorney made a pretty blunt statement. He said, in his opinion, it was illegal and unconstitutional to require employees to get vaccinated. So that was the end of that. The recent they also had a discussion about the recent governor's mandates for healthcare workers. And evidently, that includes firefighters and volunteer firefighters, and they're having some problems in South County with volunteer firefighters threatening to quit if they have to be vaccinated, and they're worried about that. And they did said that the hospital association is now worried about losing employees and they're so shorthanded. So they've supposedly reversed their decision as to mandates for healthcare employees. So that's just what I heard. I'll call Dr. Steele here to get to confirm what I'm going to tell you now about the statistics on COVID in Tillman County. And and I must tell you, they they're grim and quite sobering. So over the weekend, we had forty nine new cases in Tillamook. In the last week, we had a hundred eighty. In the last two weeks, we had three hundred and sixty one. Our previous record for a two-week period was a hundred and three. So these numbers are basically six times higher, they said, back than back when we were in the extreme risk categories when we were in those matrices. And they have fourteen outbreaks in various businesses around the county, which they're investigating, and the positivity rate they reported was twenty one point six percent, which frankly is extremely high. In the first year and a half of this pandemic, we've had five deaths. In the last week, that has doubled to eleven. And I understand they reported another death this morning. So we're now at twelve. One of the deaths over the weekend was a thirty-one-year-old female. And they reported this morning that out of those twelve deaths, every one of those people were unvaccinated. And they're also in the process of moving a mobile morgue down to the hospital area because Wad's funeral home is totally overwhelmed. So. And they, the county health department made it quite clear in their comments that this Delta variant surge is not coming from visitors. It's coming from within our own community. We're basically two-thirds vaccinated and one-third not vaccinated. And this Delta variant is on the hunt out there for victims. It's very transmissible. And it's going after the unvaccinated people. They got a target right on their back. And so you know, it's kind of clear to me that this is, we're going to be in this for the long haul. We've been in this for a year and a half. I'm vaccinated. Now they're talking about booster shots in the fall. I think this is going to be just like the flu. We're going to be getting shots for this every year. And this is going to be around for a long time. And anyway, I I think there's a lot of responsibility that has to fall on us as individuals to protect our own personal health as we go through this, just as we do for the flu. You can't rely on the government to protect you. You've got to take action for yourself, wear a mask, make a determination how you want to live your life, what kind of crowds you want to get into and get vaccinated, protect yourself. And and that's pretty much it. So what we have done, last week, we reinstated the mask mandate in advance of the governor's order. Sure, if you've been following the news, the governor reinstated the mask mandate over the weekend for indoors. And then yesterday, we reinstated it for outdoors, which are going to affect Friday. And we talked about doing a letter to send out to short-term visitors, which I believe we've got a draft to look at. And we're gonna, I think we're going to discuss the Mutsanita permit today. I don't know if you've you've probably seen this. We haven't mandated that events be shut down, but virtually every organization in North County is pretty much canceled their their events. Dan Hague sent out a list the other day. I don't know if you saw it, but the library book sale's been postponed. The NCRD Theater was going to have a welcome back celebration in September. They postponed that. Pine Grove's canceled their reopening and so forth. And I know others are doing the same thing. So so that's where we're at. I think Margaret, would you like to correct me if I said anything that was incorrect or stupid, or give us an update of what you see is going on?
No, no, I don't need to correct you. Everything that you said is right on. I hadn't heard about the twelfth death. I can I can just share really quickly some graphs and stuff that just give you know, a picture of what you just talked about. Mayor Scott, would you like me to do that?
Sure.
Okay. Me. Okay, so this is going to look really familiar. And it's not very long. Let me do slide. Okay. So this is the statewide numbers. And they're and they're going up. Not a surprise. This is, this is, I pulled this out because we haven't really been looking at pediatric cases. But as you can see, the pediatric cases have been increasing dramatically just since July, which is when the Delta variant really took off in Oregon. These are statewide numbers at this point. And and pediatric cases are highest among people aged twelve to seventeen, this top line, although they're the other ones are high as well. But the reason I show this is because people between twelve and seventeen can get the vaccine. This is an interesting set of information, which is that in Tillamook County, this is specific to Tillamook County, only a third of our twelve to seventeen-year-olds are vaccinated. If you look across at the other age groups, you can see that every, all of the other age groups are at least at fifty percent, but it's not until fifty to fifty-nine that you get up to anywhere, even a little bit close to two-thirds. So the people from sixty up are well vaccinated and the rest of the folks, as Mayor Scott said, have targets on their backs. This is the COVID-positive hospitalization, hospitalizations in state. This top blue line is region one, which we are in, and that includes the big urban counties, Portland and Washington and Plaquins and so on. And you can see that it's way up. It's not quite as high as it was back in the winter, but it's getting there quickly. Hospital bed availability in our region, region one, four percent of the ICU beds are are open and six percent of the non-ICU beds are open. And remember that ICU beds are not just for people with severe COVID. It's also for people with heart attacks, strokes, all sorts of other things. So that's not a good, that's not a good situation. And the test positivity rate, the state test positivity rate is around twelve percent. And in Tillamook County, as for the week of the fifteenth to the twenty-first, it's twenty one point seven. And just for comparison, in Platteville and Lincoln, it's around eighteen. So I doubt that that's a statistically significant difference, but it's way too high. So that's all I've got. If anybody, does anybody want to see any more of the actual slides or I'll stop sharing?
Anybody got any questions for Dr. Steele?
No, but those are really sobering slides, Margaret. Thank you.
Yeah, they really are. And I echo, including, I echo the intonation of everything that you said, Mayor Scott. It's, 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 we're starting over. Only we're starting over with a worse virus. Oh, and you and you said how long we're going to be in this. So Dr. Fauci said yesterday that he thinks that by spring of twenty twenty-two, we might be seeing the last of this. So that's really discouraging. And we're sad. And and as to what to do about it, it's the obvious stuff. Get vaccinated, wear a mask, keep your distance, wash your hands.
Well, let's talk about masks real quick. We jumped the gun and and with good reason last week and put the mask ordinance back into effect. And I've got some comments from community members, and I've noticed myself, people aren't masking up right away. And this is really hard, I think. When just a few weeks ago, all mask ordinance were lifted. There's a certain element of the community which are anti-mask, period. And we we can't just turn the switch and turn this battleship around that quick to get everybody back in mass. It's going to take some time. And thank God, we've got the the governor has put a state mandate in effect. Otherwise, we were out there on a limo by ourselves. But I think it's going to take some time to get everybody back on La Nieta into mass. I think they're doing a really good job in and inside the businesses. Phyllis and I went to Fred Myers yesterday, and they they require masks in Fred Myers again. And and but believe it or not, there were people in there without masks and nobody challenged him or anything. So it's not a hundred percent. I go back to what I said earlier. I I think this is going to boil down to everybody taking personal responsibility to protect their own health. Don't sit back and wait for the government to fix it for you. You're going to have to do an awful lot of this yourself. So.
And the government actually can't fix it unless they decide to enforce mask mandates.
Yeah, which is, you know, we've been down this road before. It took us a long time to get everybody in masks on La Nieta. That went on for, and and we never a hundred percent got there. We got better over time. But if you stick yourself individually, approach somebody that doesn't have a mask on, or if you're asking a police officer to do that, you just end up in these huge confrontations, which are just not worth it. Anybody, anyway, I, we got right away after our meeting last week, we got the the mask zone signs up again, and we got our electronic signs up there. And I think the best thing that each of us can do is just make sure we're wearing a mask and everywhere we're out and about and lead by example. And hopefully, this will continue to catch on. If people are paying any attention to these numbers, they're quite grim and quite sobering. And hopefully, that's going to get some of these people's attention. But who knows?
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I might, I I would ask that we at least consider upping our game a bit on La Nieta relative to our signage. I recognize entering mask zones is, you know, those were put up immediately, and thank you for that. But beyond that, I'm not sure I've seen a lot of masks required. So a visitor coming to town, I guess, mask zone probably is pretty self-explanatory, but I think it could be emphasized more by having our, you know, mask required on La Nieta kind of signs up too.
Well, we did have those little
Seen those, but
We had those little paper, little little paper ones on the pole. Do you think that made any difference or not?
I think, I think it did. I mean, as a La Nieta resident, and and as somebody frustrated by how many maskless people I see on the sidewalk. And I think that a lot of people don't see the signage based on how they get into town. If they come down in from La Nieta, they see the please wear a mask, and this isn't over. They see our reader board, but they do not see something saying this is a mask zone, masks are required here. Hopefully, the state rule will help. But I think that there are plenty of people walking up and down La Nieta that don't realize they're in a mask zone. I'd say at best fifty percent of the people walking up and down the sidewalk have a mask on.
Yeah, and just if I could jump in real quick, I am, I think Dan is here today, and he and I discussed this yesterday, and I know that Public Works was working on adding some additional signage on La Nieta, because I think you're right, folks approaching from the side streets, it's pretty clear, but we wanted to try to emphasize mask-wearing on La Nieta. And I know Dan was working on that.
Yeah, I'll jump in real quick. So we just got them literally hot, hot off the press. We're going to put some more of the signs up that we had along the flag, essentially the holes for the flags. But instead of having the, a lot of different arts, because we're having a lot of problems with the signs being taken down and just vandalism stuff. So we're going to put probably about fifty percent of the signs that we had up before back in. We're just going to put up a simple sign that says mask zones, red and white, plain as day, and to for folks and see if that helps out.
But that'll help. I think that's probably a good idea. I think there's consensus to do that. We did that before. And I, can I ask you a question? I was driving around town the other day. One of your mask zone ones with the big concrete pad, it looked like the sign was gone. Have you had problems with people taking the signs off those poles?
You know, Mike, during the first setup, we lost, I think, two signs. And so far, since we've re-put them back out, we've lost about four. I contacted the company, the vendor, we've been getting our signs from, asked them, hey, we have lost signs. Can you get us some more ASAP? So I'm waiting for a response on that. So I'm hoping to have maybe some signs within the next week to get those backfilled back in, and then we'll have some extras on the shelf.
Yeah.
Dan, can I ask a question?
Well, of course.
Um, the last time, the last time we had the signs up, I noticed that the hardware was pretty basic hardware that was holding those signs up. Is there the possibility of using some hardware that, you know, requires a specialized tool to undo and make it a little bit harder for kids or somebody who wants a souvenir to just, you know, take one off? Do we have some hardware options there to make these a little more durable?
Yep, we are going to be making it so they are not an easy removal. So even the ones that are on there now essentially use a nylon lock, which means they have to use wrenches to get it off. So and I don't think people are taking them down, honestly, as funny as it might sound, honestly, as a, like a bad thing. They're like, I think they're stealing the sign to use on their own place or their own neighborhood.
So Dan, have you changed the electronic sign as you come into Manzanita to indicate mask required?
The standard message we had up before is what's running. I have to double check to see what it says.
It says, please mask, please wear. If you, if you could change that, I think this, the, I personally think the electronic sign is really great. But I think we are now, the state is, and we are too, requiring, requiring masks. The the other thing I'd like to ask Leila to encourage our police officers to hand out, to to practice community policing, which is, you know, being present in the community and maybe handing out masks, not confronting people, but it, but encouraging people. I think having that kind of resource and encouragement could be very positive. We did that initially. Mike Sims, Officer Mike, did it initially, and I watched on several occasions. And people were really, there was a positive response. And afterwards, there were no masks on the ground. So I think it won't work for everybody, but it might encourage those that are maybe new to the area to put masks on.
And Dan Hague has masks at the visitor center to pass out that people come in there, I believe. I'm sure he's still doing that.
Yeah. And you know, the other source of masks for the merchants, Tillamook County has N ninety-five masks that they are willing to hand out to the merchants, and they are located at the library. So if a merchant wants the N ninety-five mask for their retail facility, they are accessible there, and the county is providing them. So I'd really encourage that resource to be publicized to the to to the merchants.
Linda, I also just wanted to mention that the Tillamook Chamber of Commerce has a number of safety supplies as far as masks and face shields and hand sanitizer that they're handing out to county businesses. So I've directed all our businesses to contact Tammy down there at the Tillamook Chamber.
Perfect, perfect. You might have them also called the library, that might
Yeah, I've mentioned that as well, but that there's, there's a couple of resources out there, thankfully.
Excellent, excellent.
Well, it sounds like we got a planned up our game on masks. Everybody comfortable with all that? Any other comments on masks? We'll move on to the next item.
Well, I'll make a comment. I I don't disagree with most of what has been said, certainly by the counselors and city staff. But this doesn't feel to me like we're meeting the moment if we're in a state of emergency. We are focusing time and again on our messaging as if we're going to convince people who have dug in deep against masks and against vaccinations by changing the wording on an electronic sign. I think that you're right, Mr. Mayor, that personal responsibility is critical in this fight. But obviously, we've reached the point of diminishing returns with personal responsibility arguments, and some folks are interpreting it to be their personal responsibility to resist authority, to ignore the government, to ignore experts. That's their personal responsibility, and that's why this is now a disease of the unvaccinated. So I'm okay asking people to please do the right thing. But we have a community where I think the willingness among residents to do the right thing and inform themselves is exemplary. We wouldn't be having this conversation today if we weren't really talking about visitors up and down La Nieta. Now, sounds like we're not interested in doing anything to shut off the flow of visitors, but visitors come to La Nieta to shop and to dine. And so at a minimum, we should be asking our merchants and business people to help with the enforcement effort by not serving anybody who's not masked in their facilities. Now, maybe most of them are already doing that. But we could have a more coordinated effort. We could have city signage that we share with the merchants so that it is a partnership between the city and the merchants to basically shut off the very reason why people come to La Nieta if they're not going to wear a mask. Yeah, you know, that doesn't mean they're not going to be on La Nieta without a mask, but once they're on La Nieta and they can't get into any of the stores, perhaps that'll drive home the message. Perhaps that'll have them disperse and go elsewhere. There's no sense, La Nieta's not a beautiful boulevard that people want to just sit around and stroll up and down. They're there because of shops and restaurants. So if they can't get into shops and restaurants, that may discourage them. So at a minimum, I think that we should be doing something with the businesses cooperatively to help them, because I'm sure most of them would prefer very much to keep their staff and their customers safe. And so they would prefer to have no people inside without masks on. And if we can help them do that by have some, having some uniform signage and an expectation up and down La Nieta, that that's the way it'll be done. I think that would be helpful. So on the mask issue, I guess that's all I have to say. I do have some other thoughts and comments and and I'm sure the conversation's going to go on from here. But I really, you know, I really think at a certain point, telling particularly the residents of this town to wear a mask, you are a Christian converted. There is no need to over-message to a highly vulnerable, highly responsible population. If you're talking about a different population that we don't know that much about, yes, we have created a challenge by being an attraction to folks we're not that familiar with. And and if we're not getting compliance from them, then we have to look for other ways to, Steve says, up our game.
Let me ask Dan. Dan, do you, hey, do you think there's a problem with the merchants for getting people masked up? I notice on the merchants that I go into, they all have signage, but it's all their signage about mask required. Once we dropped the mandate, this, many of them continued to require masks, but it was their own signage. Would it be helpful, we put together a signage that said, this is mandated by the governor of the state of Oregon and by the city of Manzanita, mask required in this?
So I think it'd be, I think it'd be very helpful. In fact, I think during the height of the pandemic, last time, we had some signs with the city's seal that said, you know, mask required by order of the city. So I I think they'd be highly appreciative and supportive of getting those back out there. I think some of them still have them, but as you said, I think it's all just regular signage. Unfortunately, most people threw away the stronger signage, you know, when when this all kind of blew over, we thought it blew over. So I think something with a uniform message and a uniform seal would go a long way. I I had a discussion with several of the merchants, and getting people to mask up inside their stores is not a problem. Largely, I should say, not a problem. And people are just receptive of it. It's, you know, the problem remains La Nieta Avenue in general, I think. So some kind of uniform sign that you could see in every window definitely would go a long way.
Leila, is that something you could work with Dan White Salon, and maybe we can get some signage out to all the merchants?
You bet.
Okay.
Mayor, it seems to me, and I'm probably stating the obvious, but it seems like we're in the midst of a retraining program right now, because we've been telling people now for a while that outside transmission was remote, the possibility of transmitting was remote. Well, now with Delta variant, that whole game has changed. And it seems to me we've got to retrain people that the outside transmission is possible, and it's not safe to be in crowds even when you're outside. So if if we can, I am not sure how we can alter our messaging, but maybe we specifically say that outside groups of people are no longer acceptable, that the variant of the Delta virus has changed the game, and we need to be flexible and and adapt appropriately. So not just say, wear a mask outside, but tell them why that wearing a mask outside is is now critical where it hadn't been in the past. So just something to think about as Leila and the staff go about creating different signage opportunities.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, as I mentioned earlier, that's the, part of the challenge is we went from masked up to it's over, no mask required, and you don't need them outside if you're vaccinated. And we flipped the message hundred and eighty degrees, and here we are trying to get her going again. So I guess anything we can do to to deal with that. So should we move on to the, to another topic? Do we got as much as we can do with masks right now under control, do you think? So we're gonna, we're gonna change our electronic signage. We're gonna get some more those signs on the white poles and the flag poles on La Nieta, and we're going to develop some uniform signage for our merchants to put on their doors. That's pretty much what we can do right now. Okay, well, let's, let's move on and talk about the Mutsanita permit. That's coming up pretty soon. They still are planning on doing it, I guess. Leila, can you give us a rundown on what's going on with that?
Sure. Megan is also here from Four Paws on the Beach. If you'd like to call upon her, but so they've asked actually for us to amend their permit to allow for a food truck. And this is a food truck. And this is a food truck that's normally in Wheeler on Fridays and at our our farmer's markets. So they've asked if they could park that in front of the visitor's center on La Nieta Street during the parade. And then I think from our discussion last time and with the mask mandate for the farmer's market, the council had been discussing the possibility of adding masks to the to the parade as well. So I suppose this is your opportunity to consider the the permit, the request for its change at this time and to have a discussion around kind of where all of you are at in terms of either requiring masks or having the parade at all. And as I mentioned, I believe I see Megan here as well.
Well, Megan, would you like to address the council and the community here on on what you have planned for the Mutsanita Festival? Are you are you still committed to going forward with what we're seeing with COVID? Or are you kind of on the fence? Or where are you at?
Um, I thank you for letting me speak. Definitely on the fence. I want to do what's best for the community. Certainly don't want to, you know, be getting anybody, you know, don't want to make a super spreader event. We were thinking because we were outside that we were safer. But it, with things changing on a regular basis, you know, there's a lot of conversation about doing what's right and what's best. Obviously, we'd love to be able to do it. It's a great fundraiser, and it's a fun community event, but.
I understand. Everybody's a little nervous right now trying to figure out what makes the most sense. You guys were not able to do this last year, as I remember, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Any questions from the counselors for Megan, or how do you feel about how you feel about having the Mutsanita Festival this year? I know you do all the games and everything down on the beach, which is wide open. But you do do the parade down La Nieta, and you have some activities right there by the visitor's center, right?
Correct, yeah. We've got the silent auction right there, which would, in all fairness, be, you know, kind of close quarters. We are more than happy to try and get six-foot regulations in place and only allow a certain amount of people at the table at any given time. You know, also with registration, making sure we keep everybody six feet apart. But again, you know, I want to do what's going to be best for the community. And if it means postponing this another year, then we will find another way to try and raise money.
Tell us about how the money is distributed and how you raise money.
So the money is raised by donations from local businesses to sponsorships as well as registration from people who want to participate in the event itself. And then through the silent auction, all that money, a hundred percent of it goes, I'm sorry, minus some operating costs, goes to Animal Haven by the Sea. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have T-shirt sales. That's another way we get some money for it.
Well, what is everybody thinking here?
Well, I applaud Megan's willingness to compromise and adapt. And I, it doesn't take much for me to imagine the what it's like to be in that position. But we are talking about the density of people on La Nieta, the density of people in town, social distancing, reeducating people about wearing masks outside. To me, it seems difficult to support an event that either could be modified to be completely on the beach or postponed, and I'm happy to put my money where my mouth is. I'm happy to help support this event, even if it's delayed again. Megan, can you can you let us know how much you anticipated raising from the event?
Well, my my normal is a little bit lower this year, given COVID. We didn't expect to raise as much as normal. But generally, we can raise upwards of about ten thousand dollars.
Because I think, you know, I I think that canceling a major event like this probably is more powerful as a message than putting up signs here and there, asking people to do the right thing. You know, when the Olympics went on without spectators in the stands, I'm sure that got to some people. And I'm not enough, but got to some people. So canceling an event that is cherished, like the Fourth of July Parade, has a messaging value in it in and of itself. And and I would join Hans, and I think that maybe there's an opportunity for the city, not directly, but certainly implicitly, to throw itself fully behind a fundraising appeal so that we can generate a significant amount of community support in the absence of an event. I mean, I think, for example, if the vote today was on bringing the food truck in, I think that would be a non-starter. I mean, obviously, we're doing everything we can to reduce density. The idea of potentially increasing it by bringing in yet one more attraction wouldn't make sense. So I I would I would favor both postponing the event and a considerable effort on the part of the city and the visitor's center, at least informally, to help rally community support to generate financial support for Haven. But I know it's a tough thing to have to do, but again, I think it really sends a a powerful message. And I think we need to start applauding the people that do the right thing, that that take the chance and and are willing to make the sacrifice and cancel things. They should be applauded. Folks that don't want to step up, not so much. But but if you guys are are willing to work with us, I think we could probably figure out ways to, I don't know, about ten grand, but we can put a dent in in what would be missing if you had to cancel.
Yeah, I I think you got some good ideas, Jerry. I was I'm thinking along the same lines. The city could get behind an effort with Dan Hague and the business community to set up some sort of a online donation site or something that that we would endorse and just explain to the community exactly what's going on and why we're doing this. And that Megan and her group is on board with us, and we can make it a positive thing instead of a negative thing, I think. And it's and it's a significant statement. Yeah, Steve.
Yeah, so I'm coming from a little different perspective. First of all, I separate the money from the issue of public safety. I mean, it it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, I understand the need to generate the money, and I'm fully supportive and do what I can. But I focus on the public safety aspect of this. So I look at it in a couple of different ways. One, if there are measures in place to prevent, to provide social distancing, which could be accomplished outside, especially when you're at basically the beach, and you've got, almost all of us have got some sort of an air movement going on. That's one environment. Number two is I try to, I'm thinking about what does this relate to in terms of other events that we haven't canceled? The one that comes to mind as an outdoor event is, in fact, the farmer's market. So how do we say the farmer's market is okay if you wear a mask? But the Mutsanita event also outside and providing a physical separation among people is not okay. So from a consistency standpoint, I mean, the events we've talked about, the Hoffman Center and the Pine Grove, and some of these others were, for the most part, indoor events. This is an outdoor event, not dissimilar to what the farmer's market is doing and for a shorter period of time. So to me, if they could come back to our meeting on the night, is that our council meeting? With a plan, and we would also know more about where we're at with the spread of the virus. I I just am a little more, a little more reluctant to just say you can't do it out of hand without actually analyzing what the risk is to the community. So but I understand everybody's argument. It's just where I come down on it.
Can I say something about farmer's market? Since this pandemic has started, as a family, we've put a lot of energy into connecting to local producers of food, and we rely on the market for food. We still shop at Fred Meyer, but from the parking lot, I've been inside the building for over a year. And I know that a lot of people go to farmer's market for fun and for an event. But I think a lot of people actually do rely on the market to buy food from local farmers and food suppliers. And that, to me, that's where the fundamental difference is. We've actually, we're somewhat dependent now for food from there in a way that we never have been before.
My my big issue with the farmer's market is more the food cart. That that requires people to remove their masks in order to eat, which I personally believe we should put a hold on the food cart temporarily in terms of the wearing masks at the farmer's market and social distancing. They've actually done a pretty good job of supporting that as well.
Remember, the food cart is outside, and they're eating outside. We have restaurants up and down La Nieta with many people inside eating without any masks going on. So we've got to be careful about an inconsistency there. Let's take some comment from the public. I see Julian as her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a remark on a difference between the farmer's market and something like Mutsanita or the food cart. I think the difference is congestion. There are parts of the farmer's market that are congested, and people don't maintain a distance when they're in lines at certain booths. But certainly, there's congestion around the food cart. And there, there is anticipated congestion around Mutsanita, both on the beach and on La Nieta. I think the farmer's market did close its music operation in an effort to reduce some congestion around that stage area. Another consideration I'd like the council to begin to think about popped up for me when I attended a meeting about an event to be held in Clatsop County. I attended this meeting by Zoom on yesterday. And it's an outdoor event. But the consideration that came up was the notion that the event pulling people from outside the community, at least fifty people from outside the community, might create a mini-spreader event. It might tax an already overloaded medical situation. For instance, if there were emergency need of an ambulance, emergency need with a broken leg or a bee sting for somebody to go to a hospital that's already near maximum capacity. What's the ethical responsibility of a board of directors or a committee or a city council when making a consideration about taxing overloaded medical facilities? And so I think that's a new, a new angle for many of us to think about. And I'm I'm sorry to put that on your plate, but you are our leaders right now who have all the toughest decisions to make for the benefit of all of us. People talk about personal responsibility, but they have stopped talking about public health. And that's where the responsibility rests today. It's not about personal responsibility. It's about the responsibility for public health, and that is a matter for government consideration. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment out there on this topic?
There's no other hands raised.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would just like to respond real quickly to a couple of the different comments. And again, my my focus was on public health, as Julian suggested. But I'm also looking at this from a consistency standpoint. The governor's order is mask outdoors when you cannot socially distance. It doesn't say cancel the event when you don't have social distance. It says, wear a mask. So to ask that they cancel the event goes beyond what the governor has requested, which is fine. And if we thought that there was a real risk to public health, we should be doing that. I just, in my, well, as I think about an event like Mutsanita, it seems to me that they would have the opportunity to ensure social distancing by monitoring the folks and advising the folks and signage and all the different things we've done in the past. To just make a, to me, what is almost a random decision to say, well, we might get some, we might get some spread at the Mutsanita event without really any evidence of that, and yet we still allow things like the farmer's market, which is, my understanding, is selling more than just food. And we have restaurants where you're eating inside, and we have restaurants where you're eating outside. I just want to be consistent with how we approach this. That's why people get confused, is where we have a rule for one organization and a different rule for another organization. Let's, to me, stay, let's let's stay consistent, and let's stay consistent in concert with the governor's order. And I see Mark is saying that I'm very set low, but hopefully you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you fine, Steve.
Okay, so we need a a motion here. We're going to have to make a decision. Now, I don't sense we have a whole lot of consensus here. I'll throw this out here. Whenever we approve the Mutsanita, as long as they are in compliance with the governor's order of masks and social distancing and not approve the addition of the food truck, which we just add to more congestion possibly. That's my thought.
Can we get, can we get just some clarification? I know it's been a while since we approved the initial permit. I'm familiar with the event as it occurs on the beach. What about the parade? Where does the parade start? And how many, you know, what's the expectation of a crowd on La Nieta and for how long?
This is Megan. So the the way that it works is that we've got registration that's set up on First and La Nieta. And then the parade starts at the Little Apple and goes down to the beach. And at that point, everybody ends up on the beach. We start all the beach games. Traditionally, we then have a couple more games that happen up on First as well as the the silent auction. So everybody comes back up towards town after the after the beach events. And then after that, it's, everybody disperses. So it's 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 a half-day event. It's like ten to two generally. But the the parade itself is just merely however long it takes people to walk down to the beach, maybe about ten minutes.
I see we have our city attorney is with us today. Good morning, James.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor Scott. Good morning to the council.
Thanks for joining us. We're dealing with tough decisions every day now, as you know. So if you want to throw your two cents in, feel free.
These, these, these are, these are challenging, challenging decisions. I I do appreciate the the struggle in making a decision with respect to with respect to permitting. Of course, the council knows that, you know, the main guideline, and this has been touched on by by councillor Notall and others, that, you know, consistency is key. The the main guideline, of course, is what we refer to as neutral time, place, and manner restrictions when it comes to permitting issuances. So certainly, an an item that is difficult, frankly, but but as the neutrality piece is the item that I would I would encourage on on the legal side.
Thank you.
In the, in the same sense that I that I couldn't support farmer's market being as close to La Nieta as it was for possible congestion reasons, I have a hard time, given the devastating situation the county is in. I have a hard time supporting an event on La Nieta that similarly could go well, but but does bring in that risk of congestion and an unknown element of crowd control and compliance. Like, I can't support it right now. I was just going to ask you if James could maybe zero in a little bit, because I'm sure you're familiar with the the differences between Mutsanita and the farmer's market, both in terms of location and the nature of the event and the fact that one is an ongoing thing. And so do you have any more specific guidance for us with regard to whether we can treat these two different events differently?
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Spagman. The, the short answer is, is yes, you can have kind of different authorizations under the permitting that's provided to both events. Yes, you could conceptually say, you know, yes to one and no to another for, for, for conducting the event altogether. You know, the, the, the the risk of, of any sort of challenge to overarching neutrality requirements is, is frankly quite low because of my understanding of the makeup of the events and the, and the scope. So there, there is flexibility to, to tailor them or to, to affirm or prohibit.
You know, and when comparing the farmer's market to the Matsonita, remember we, as Hans said, we did move the farmer's market off of Lanita's location this year to Underhill to provide more space and social distancing because of our concern of congestion on Lanita. This Matsonita event is right on Lanita, so. Looks like we have another comment from the community. Mark, go ahead.
Oh, hi. I just wanted to follow up and agree that the off Lanita makes it sound somewhat straightforward to perhaps amend the Matsonita to happen primarily on the beach in some more distanced way. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mark. So it sounds like, interesting discussion here. Hans cannot support this. It doesn't sound like you want to support it, Jerry. Do, does somebody want to make a motion or do we want to keep discussing this a little more? There's no consensus here among us, clearly.
Well, I, I would support Hans's stance. I, I think the congestion on Lanita is a significant reason to, to not have that and to encourage community support of it. I thought Jerry's idea in terms of community support was excellent. I, I am unfortunately going to have to go. But the, the one comment I would make consistent with James's advice is that we actually allow food carts. So as opposed to a restaurant, we are permitting food carts. And I would strongly encourage for at least a short time that the food cart in the farmer's market not be permitted, at least until the numbers change a bit. And I can say for about two more minutes, but then I'm going to have to go.
So, okay, well, I don't know if we're gonna get to a vote. I think I understand where you're at, at this point. The, before you have to leave, Linda, the, Megan, could we talk to you again for a moment? Are you still with us, I assume?
I am.
I, I sensed from your earlier comments that you're a little bit on the fence on this thing. If, if we make a decision here, and it sounds like we're heading in that direction to not approve Matsonita on Lanita this year, could you live with that? And would you be happy with the city council supporting some sort of an online donation effort to go towards the event, the Animal Haven facility? Could you live with that, do you think?
Absolutely. Like I said earlier, I want to do what's best for the community. And if it means that this is just, you know, bad timing, we'll find another way to do it and we'll resume when it's safe.
Thank, thank you for your consideration. Dan Hager, are you still with us?
I am, yes. Hello.
Do you think we could put together an effort to raise money virtually for this event if this event was not held this year?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to help Megan with that. In fact, I mentioned to her that we have a donation portal still set up on the visitor center website, Explore Manzanita, that we were using for our business relief fund last year. So perhaps we can find a way to modify that and help market some kind of fundraising effort.
Okay. Let's move quickly so Linda can vote, hopefully. I will entertain a motion to not approve the Matsonita permit for this year in that the city will support an effort to raise money for their charities virtually.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to not approve the Matsonita permit this year and for the community to support their effort to raise money for their charity. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Say nay.
Opposed.
Okay, so that would be a four to one vote that we will not approve the Matsonita permit this year, and I thank everybody. This is a tough discussion. And I appreciate Megan and the four pos on the beach, understanding and working with us and we'll, we'll make this work as best we can to raise money for Animal Haven. Linda, I think you can leave now if you want. Thanks for your
Thank you. Good discussion. Thanks, James. Thanks so much. And a special thanks to Megan. I, that was really helpful to work in partnership. So thank you, Megan.
Yes, thank you. That's very important.
Can I just explain that my vote is not about, wasn't made in a public health context with respect to that I'm opposed to mask or I'm opposed to following the governor's order. My vote is about the consistency and how we approach these issues. And we've approved other, well, we've approved an emergency volunteer corps tent project where people are congregating to raise tents. We've approved the farmer's market. So that was my only issue is either we get some policies in place or we start being consistent in terms of the way that we approach these issues. And I appreciate very much, Megan, your cooperation with the city. And if it weren't for that issue, I think it's a good decision. I just want to be consistent. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. We want to talk one other issue today. We talked last time about sending a letter out to our short-term rental visitors regards to vaccination. I know there's a draft that's been proposed that the short-term rental group put together. Leila, can you give us an update on where we're at on that?
I'm just that the draft has been sent out. I know Joe is here from the short-term rental committee and she worked like lightning fast with the committee to draft that letter and I believe has kind of their general support. So right now it's, it's with you and in consideration of when we should get that out to folks is sort of the next step.
Anybody had a chance to look at that letter and you have any comments?
I, I looked at the letter. I thought it was well done. I appreciate the effort. I hope that the reader of that letter seriously considers not completing their trip to Manzanita. And in order for that hope to be more likely to be realized, I would just ask to consider adding some more specific language. When we talk about the alarming spread of the Delta variant in Tillma County, we, we now have numbers that show what a six-fold increase in cases, I believe, in a very short period of time compared to the first 10 months of the virus. So whatever those numbers are that were discussed on yesterday's meeting, much more graphically make the case than an adjective like alarming. And so I would, I would get those numbers and plug them into that first sentence or first paragraph and just punch home really clearly. Because I think a lot of folks in the Portland area come down here specifically because they perceive it to be a safer place to be. And it's not a safer place to be, and they need to know that as, as clearly as possible. And I think hard numbers work better than, than adjectives at this point. I know Steve and I had an exchange last night and Steve had some thoughts about additions to a letter. I don't know if those still hold. Steve, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I, I thought you were on the right path last night.
I'm still there. And the, the the comment that I wanted to make and add to the letter, at least for consideration, is to put one more sentence in there that suggests we are continuing to monitor the situation and further action. You know, including vaccination proof and/or reduction in short-term rental visits may be required if we don't see compliance. So I'd like to at least put the warning out there that this may not be the end, depending upon what the situation and how it how it develops over the coming weeks. So it's just, I'm with Jerry in terms of we need to make this as strong as we can, still be in a friendly way. You know, I hope, I hope we have a moment to answer, to allow James to answer some of the questions that Jerry and I had posed to him. I think those, we posed some questions to Leila, who then indicated she would be talking to James about those. And I do hope he has a chance to reflect on those or at least provide his insights, but I'd like to make it as strong as we can make it. I'm not I maybe not with the county relative to the county's desire not to restrict visitor travel. I thought that, and we're probably getting a little off subject when I say that, but it's disappointing to me from my seat in, here in the gallery is that, you know, the county is making, in some respects, unilateral decisions about the public health of our community by suggesting that without having conferred with us or at least conferring with the cities in the county before they make those, you know, suggestions, but it was kind of thinly veiled suggestion. Anyway, that's where I'm at. I'd just like to add one more sentence to it that would suggest that further actions may be necessary depending upon the state of affairs.
Anybody else? Hans, you got any comments on this?
Well, I'm, I'm not personally opposed to discouraging people from coming here, short of banning them from doing so. We haven't taken a vacation for a couple of years. We haven't driven further away from Portland. I've eaten one meal in a restaurant between the two surges in Portland, celebrating my second vaccine. It's the only time I've eaten in a restaurant. I, I don't, I just personally don't understand how people can go on vacation right now. But, you know, that's me. I'm in a different headspace. Governor of Hawaii said, just please, don't come to Hawaii. That was pretty, pretty significant in my mind, you know, a whole state. Just maybe, maybe stay away. Just don't come to Hawaii right now, please. I don't have a problem with discouraging people from coming here until we get through the worst of this and start on the downhill slope of it. So in other words, make that letter as strong as you, as you want it to be. And I support that.
Is, is James still with us? Does he have a comment on that letter?
I didn't hear the letter with James. So I don't know that you have a comment on the letter.
I, I have, I have not had an opportunity to, to, to review the letter. I, I am available to, to, to comment on that or, or other questions that the council may have. I have been in communication with, with Leila about some of the, the inquiries and, and should the council choose to take additional, you know, actions, particularly with respect to vaccination? I would urge that, 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 that I be a resource and, and helping the council answer any questions that you may have.
Well, basically the letter is to caution people about coming to Manzanita and request that they be vaccinated, and we can put a little bit stronger language in there, I guess. And if you guys want to make a motion to, to approve that with Jerry, what you want to suggest and what Steve wants to suggest, and then I would suggest we send it to James for review and then we can get it out. How's that sound?
That sounds well, although I think until we see a final form of the letter, I'm not sure if I mean, I, I guess, I guess we could work on a letter real quick. The, the letter is written is actually very good. And we're, we're asking for some fairly minor tweaks to it, but I think significant tweaks.
Well, give, give us your tweak again, what you're asking for, and Leila can record this and add it to the letter and then give it to James to look at. So say what you want to say again.
Well, so my, the first tweak is the, the opening paragraph does paint a bleak picture of what's going on in Tillma County. I think we can paint it bleaker by using some of the statistics that were offered yesterday on the county meeting. And I don't have them in front of me. I just recall that it was something in the, in the neighborhood of six times as many cases in the last month as in the first 10 months of the pandemic. So whatever those statistics are, I think they can be used to drive home the point more saliently than a simple adjective alarming. So that would be tweak number one. Tweak number two is that Steve and I and, and Leila, and I'm sure others individually kicked around some thoughts and ideas about what could be done potentially either to require vaccination documentation of anybody staying at an STR or even limiting the occupancy of STRs during this time. And although we're not prepared at this point, apparently, to, to move forward on either of those, we have had discussions with the city manager and she with the city attorney. And we think it's important to elevate to the community and to potential visitors that those discussions are ongoing and are under consideration and that there may come a time when council will be more prepared to, to take action along those lines, vaccine documentation or a potential partial shutdown of the occupancy of the, of our inventory of STRs. So, you know, that, the, the second language, I guess, is probably where we need James's help a little bit more. The first language I'm talking about is really worse than, worsemanship. So I would move that we work on those changes and get that letter out ASAP, but it's gonna require the two tweaks to be put in and then James, I guess, to take a look. So it may slow us down by a bit. Not too much.
And what was your, what was your tweak again, Steve, that you wanted to say that we're, repeat that again, please?
Yeah, it was just to have a simple sentence that suggests we continue to monitor the situation and further restrictions may be forthcoming should conditions warrant. And I'm not sure this letter really requires, with all due respect, James, I appreciate everything. But I'm not sure this letter requires a legal review. There's nothing in there that is all that controversial and pretty well documented and supported by evidence, even from the governor's order. So I think we could literally have Leila add that sentence, maybe tweak the first paragraph with some additional forceful language and get that thing out via Judy's email distribution list and any other ways of doing, including Dan also has a list from the visitor center. So we could have that out by early afternoon if Leila is agreeable to that.
Yeah, James, I see you. Go ahead.
I was just going to add, no offense taken, councillor Notall, and, and that is certainly a, a path we can go, the, the ultimately engaging me. It's the council's decision. So that makes sense to me.
I just don't see it as a legal issue, James.
Leila, can I ask you to tweak that letter a little bit and send it out to the councillors again for final review? And then I think we can just get it out, probably. Do you see anything wrong with that?
No.
Okay. You know, the, I know this going on in our minds about requiring vaccinations for short-term rail people, and I think you know, talk about consistency. The vast majority of people that visit our town come from our second homeowners, which represents the vast majority of our housing stock. And are we being consistent if we don't ask them to be vaccinated to come down? When they come down with their family and their friends and they're a big source of our visitors, bigger than the short-term rails. And then I have another big question. We haven't even asked our residents, are we 100% vaccinated with everybody that lives here? I guarantee you, we're not. We haven't asked if everybody's vaccinated that lives here. So it's, it's a very complicated question in my mind. But, and Jerry, you made a great comment early on. We've picked teams, we've picked sides. Two-thirds of us are vaccinated, a third of us don't want to wear masks and are not going to get vaccinated, and we're dug in. And I, I don't mean that here at Manzanita, clearly, but I mean nationally and in the state of Oregon. We're all dug in at this point after a year and a half. at this point after a year and a half. And how that log jam is going to get broken, I don't know. But if, if you're not vaccinated, as I said earlier, you got a target on your back and there's a natural selection going on right now. And you've got yourself and your family at risk. And you better figure it out. So anyway.
My, I'm gonna just quickly comment there because I think it I think it does become a complicated question when you add in second homeowners and residents. I don't think you need to. We are talking about a unique population that Hebo and Cloverdale and Nahalem and Wheeler and all kinds of towns in this county do not have. We have a unique population of STR visitors. And I do not think it, it, it serves us well to try to deal with that population and then confuse us by adding in residents and second homeowners. I understand the problems and I've certainly heard that the comments across the community, but I, I, I actually personally reject that. I think we can, if we were inclined to limit STR visitors or require proof of a vaccination, I would have no problem looking at STR visitors as a uniquely different subset of our flowing population in town. And, and along those lines, and I think it dovetails with something Steve said, I am not disappointed in, in Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Bell's comments. I understand what she is saying, but she is representing a county of 28,000 people with conditions far different and far more diverse than Manzanita. Manzanita, I believe our median age is 66. And for every four full-time residential households in the community, we have three STRs. So we have very unique conditions in Manzanita that simply don't exist countywide. And if we chose to do something different in Manzanita than the county wants to do, I think that would be certainly appropriate. But I understand where we're at and I, I accept that. I just think that people people of different opinions in town are speaking up. And I think we need to pay close attention to that. There is one thing that I would like to ask James to comment on while he's here. I'm pretty sure I heard yesterday the president urging employers, including public employers to begin mandating vaccinations for their staff. But then earlier in the meeting, you repeated our county attorney's position or district attorney's position that to do so would be illegal. And I'm frankly confused. So James, I would, I think it would be helpful, helpful for us to know from you what the stated law is on an employer, a public employer requiring vaccination staff.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Councilor Spegman. I, I, I didn't intend to suggest that mandating vaccinations, employer mandated vaccinations are illegal. They, they are not illegal. An employer can mandate vaccinations. The you know, legality of it is something that is, we've got a lot of guidance primarily through administrative rules that have come through EEO, COHA and, and Organosia that support that, that position. So, so you certainly can do it. I think the, the complexity comes in with, with how you do it, right? And, and what exactly that looks like. You know, the, the exceptions that, that an employer may entertain, the accommodations, if there's a, there's a medical exception or, or a religious belief exception that fits, you know. Those are the, the, the questions that require a bit more, more analysis and detail and, and actually carrying out the mandate, but you certainly can have one.
So, so when, when our district attorney or county attorney said flatly, that's unconstitutional, illegal, we're not going to do it, you would take issue with that?
I would disagree. I would disagree. There, there certainly I, and we anticipate that there will be challenge constitutional challenges. But, but based on the guidance that has come out and based on the case law that we, that we have access to at this state, I would, I would be on the other side of the, of that argument.
Mr. Mayor, can we, can we go back before, because I think this whole issue is a whole nother separate issue that deserves quite a bit of discussion. And I, can we go back to the issue of the letter? Did we, because I thought I heard Jerry make a motion and then it got cut off and we haven't actually finalized that, right? Or is my memory completely gone here?
You, you got it right, but I think the mayor correctly suggested that we don't, we don't really need a motion. We just need Leila to, to do some tweaking and, and get it out. I think the sentence is a common sense of the council that you know, the letter as written with some tweets as discussed is good to go. And you were right to to eliminate the James piece, which I think was a more complicated piece.
Part of the reason I'm bringing it up is I see Danielle's hand up and I'm guessing she's not talking about employee vaccinations.
I was going to call on her as soon as I got a chance. Call on her right now. We'll wrap up the letter. Danielle?
Hi, guys. Thank you so much for, for all you're doing. I just wanted to chime in a little bit from a vacation rental standpoint and let you know that we have had some abundant, I should say, amount of cancellations. People are very cautious. I just want to put that out there that people are taking responsibility a lot more ahead of time this year than they did the first go around, at least from what we're seeing in our company. So, you know, every day we're, we're opening our emails in the morning and we're getting a request for cancellation or a request for credit or a request for change dates. So I feel like people are really being a lot more cautious this time around, if that's helpful in any way. You know, obviously we're, we're going to be in support of anybody who makes that decision. To be honest with you, I just canceled my November Hawaii trip after yesterday, hearing in the day before with what the governor of Hawaii was saying. I myself canceled my whole family vacation for November. So I think if you're a responsible individual, you'll, you'll do what's right. And I feel like a lot of people are doing that this time round. And we're being as flexible with our guests as possible so that they aren't forced to come here. We have had a lot of people call and say, we're getting, you know, four families together or four different households together. And we really just don't feel comfortable. We need to move our reservation or cancel it. And so I just want to let you know that that's organically happening. It's not like everyone is full fledged and keeping their reservations. That's not the case. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Danielle.
Sure.
Well, I think we can put the, the letter thing to bed, right? We, we got a plan, right, Leila? Okay, let's, let's move forward. I, I don't want this meeting to go forever today, but talking about requiring employees to be vaccinated. The, and the statement made by the county district attorney, as opposed to what James said, it just was what's going on in our nation. We, if you watch the news, you see this going on. Different states are saying different things, different municipalities, everybody's arguing with each other. And it's just what's going on. It's clear the county is not going to, they have about 250 employees. It's clear to me the county will not require vaccinations at Tillma County. I, I, I got that message pretty clear. Here in Manzanita, we have about 12 employees. I think we can effectively deal with a vaccination issue, working with them one-on-one. I talked to Leila about that. We will talk to people, work with people and work through the issue. If we had 50 or 100 employees, it'd be a different situation. We have a small staff here, we all know. And we'll work with them and solve the issue. I, I'm confident we can without without having to make a big vaccination mandate and make it a big deal out of it. At least that's my thoughts at this point.
I, may I say something to Mayor?
Sure. No, you can't, Steve.
So I just wanted to say, and I don't, I won't articulate this as well as I would like to, but I'm going to just suggest that I spent I was thinking about this the other day. I spent 50 years of my life in various aspects of public service, whether that was working for a government or volunteering for an organization or what have you. But out of my life, 50 years have been spent working for the benefit of the public. And when I signed on for that role, I knew that I had special circumstances attached to me. That meant in order to protect the public, I had to be protected myself. And in my career, annually, I had to have vaccination shots for things like hepatitis and because of healthcare issues. I had annual physical exam. I mean, all the different things that go along with being a public servant. I can only, if I may, encourage those of our staff members who have not been vaccinated to think about your fellow employees and to think about your role as a public servant for our community. And just encourage you as strongly as I can to really consider being vaccinated. They, the vaccinations are safe. They're proven effective. And it would make the safety of the people that you work with and the community that you serve much better. I just wanted to say that. So if anybody that's listening right now is not vaccinated and is a member of our community and our workforce, please, please consider getting vaccinated.
Those are very good, very good comments, Steve. I, I really agree to them. I, I will talk to anybody that works for the city, anybody that lives in the city, anybody that works in the city, if they have a question about vaccinations. This has got, we've, somehow we got to move this country, move the ball a little bit on this thing. And it's, it's horrifying to be sitting on the sidelines vaccinated as I am and watch younger people in this county getting seriously sick and some people dying because they refuse to get vaccinated or just haven't taken the opportunity to get vaccinated. We've got to move that ball. So enough said, does anybody, we got a bunch of stuff in the chat room. I, I I don't know what, is there anything in that chat room of urgent that we need to address? Or can I look at it after, we look at it after the meeting? Oh, yes, one more hand raised. Catherine, I'm going to let you have the floor here.
Yeah, good morning. I wanted to thank everybody for the level headedness of the conversation this morning. I've got family and friends all over the country and many of them, when I talk about what's been going on in our town and in our state, would be more than happy to be in Oregon and particularly more than happy to be in Manzanita right now with the quality and level of the leadership. It doesn't mean that everybody's going to agree, but it does mean that people come to the meeting, to the discussion with some facts and a consideration for listening to the other person. Those are both qualities that I have very much appreciated this morning, whether I've agreed with an individual speaker or not. I am very disappointed in our county government and I'll refrain another further comment about that at this time. But I, I think the challenging thing in this for all of us is to be dependent on people making poor decisions for themselves at which impact us right now. And I think you're doing a good job of being reasonable about what you can control and do something about, but not verging over into kind of crowd hysteria, which has happened at times here about, you know, the other, which is the visitor, which is the STR person. When in fact, many of the people visiting here are coming from places with higher vaccination rates than we have locally or in our county. So I've appreciated the quality of things. I've appreciated the way that action is taken and that you are being reasonable about what is within your purview to be able to do. So thanks to everybody for the work on that.
Thank you. Catherine, for those kind words. Does anybody have anything else? I think we'll, otherwise I think we're going to adjourn. Our next council meeting is in a couple of weeks on September 8th. We'll see how things are going then. And I guess my final message is get vaccinated and keep your head down, stay home, stay safe, stay calm. We'll get through this. So with that, I think we're adjourned. Did I miss anything? Leila, I should ask you before I just arbitrarily cancel a meeting.
I think the council is satisfied, as I am too.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your time. We're adjourned.
Thank you.